Okay.
So the first case, Johanna, is 660 Chestnut Hill Avenue.
Yeah, I have to open the hearing, Polly, and read the remote participation rules. But thank you. Good evening. This is Chair Johanna Schneider. Before we begin, I will confirm that all members and other persons anticipated to participate on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Randolph Mickelson.
Present.
And Wadner OJ.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Polly Selko.
Present.
Cameron James.
Present.
Do we have any other staff joining us this evening, Polly?
No, we do not.
Okay. All speakers should please identify themselves by name. Prior to speaking, this hearing of the ZBA in open session is being conducted remotely and in a manner that is consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, which authorizes this body to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate public access is provided. Adequate public access does not include public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This hearing will feature public comment. For this hearing, the ZBA is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's calendar, which identifies how the project may access the hearing. Please be advised that the hearing is and that some attendees may be participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer as anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are also available to the public and may be accessed through the town website or by request from planning staff. Finally, before turning to the agenda, we'll cover some ground rules that will permit clear and effective conduct of our business and help to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each member by name, excuse me, to provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold yours until your name is called. Please also remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes before responding. Please wait until the floor is yielded to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in sidebar comment with other members, please do so through me. Finally, each vote taken in this hearing will be conducted by roll call vote. For the public comment component of the hearing, I will first ask members of the public, if there are any who wish to speak, to identify themselves by name and address only. I will call on each by name. Please enter your name in the chat section. You can find the chat icon on the bottom of your screen. Click on this icon in the chat window. We'll appear on the right. Our host, Polly Selko, will queue members in the order in which the request is received. Additionally, we will ask if members of the public who are calling in would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to the project. Our first item this evening is 660 Chestnut Hill Avenue. Is the applicant available?
I am, Madam Chair.
Mr. Allen, will you waive the reading of the published notice?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. For the record, Madam Chair, my name is Robert Allen. I have a law practice 300 Washington Street in Brookline Village. I'm here representing the owner of the property, Shara Hefner, and with her is Philip Kramer, our architect. I appreciate you taking this matter first. It's a Section Six. I think straightforward, non-controversial, no opposition, less than 400 square foot addition that we're adding. This is a good story. This is 660 Chestnut Hill Ave. We know where Chestnut Hill Ave is. S-15 zoning district. Neighborhoods mostly single-family homes in the district. This house shares a common driveway and two-car garage with their neighbor. A common condition actually in this neighborhood, particularly on that side of the street. And nothing in this proposal changes that and no issues at all with the abutter. I think you have a couple of letters of support from the abutters. It's a great sort of how I came back and how I stayed in Brookline story. Shara actually grew up across the street where her mom still lives today. And when this came available in 2020, it was an expensive but exciting opportunity for Shara to come back. She had two twins who were six years old at the time. They are now 12. And the house is 1,300 square feet. And she just basically needs to find some space away from those two 12-year-olds, which I'm half joking about. But the proposal is to, Philip did a very modest addition. We spent a lot of time coming up with options that worked for this really tight lot. You know, the rule of Section Six, make sure you don't create any new nonconformity. So we spent a lot of time. We changed around the proposal. So we're only at 185 square feet to the first floor and 200 square feet to the second floor for a total of 385 square feet, but it's well-used space and demolition is not triggered in any way. Planning Board was unanimously supportive and even suggested expanding the addition further. While the planning board is effective at generating enthusiasm, they often overlook the fact that we must comply with zoning regulations. So when construction costs were considered, it was obviously this proposal that we had was the best and most practical option to move forward with. So we are moving forward 385 square feet. As I said, you have letters of support from 672 Chestnut Hill Ave, two houses to the right, and 657 Chestnut Hill Ave, which is across the street. Shara's parents at 653 are also very supportive, but we didn't bother sending you a letter. We've reached out to all the abutters in the neighborhood and nobody spoke in opposition at the planning board and nobody got back to us. As I said, this addition is in the back. You can't see it from the street. I know you've had the opportunity to look at it, but I have Philip Kramer here if you need to have him walk you through the design.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Randolph, do you need to see a presentation from the architect?
I don't.
Wadner, do you need to see a presentation from the architect?
No, I don't.
Mr. Allen, you may proceed.
Great. So to jump into zoning relief, we're requesting a finding under 48, Section Six, to allow for an increase of the pre-existing nonconforming FAR and the pre-existing nonconforming side yard setback. The existing FAR is .412, and the proposal would modestly increase to .496. The maximum allowed in this district is .25. So we're over it to begin with. And the existing side yard setback is 7.2 on the north and 8.8 on the south. There's no change to the setbacks. The proposed rear addition is setback 8.5 in the north at 9.8, but the south, so greater setbacks than existing. So I think we are creating a better circumstance. Again, we spent a lot of time with the architect and Shara coming up with a proposal that works, that actually doesn't exasperate any of the nonconforming conditions. So under DEDRICK, the ZBA may allow for the extension of a pre-existing nonconformity as long as no new nonconformities and no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. This minor addition will not create any new nonconformities and no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I know at times this board has looked at 905 to look at that factor, and I believe the specific site is appropriate location. The property is located in a residential neighborhood, and the addition will maintain this use, not adversely affect the neighborhood, no change to the use. And the proposed addition is in the rear yard. The streetscape is preserved. Again, no opposition, unanimous support from the planning board, no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. We're not changing the driveway in any way. Advocate appropriate facilities will be provided, and the development will not have any effect on the supply on housing available for low and moderate income. Again, as I always say, it allows this growing family to stay in Brookline, and it only takes 385 square feet to do that. So I appreciate your support, and I know Shara really appreciates your support.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, just one clarifying question. When I looked at the planning board memo report, it notes that you are looking for relief under 5.43 for the side lot setback and under 48, Section Six for the FAR. Is that correct or not?
It's been consistently Paul's approach to throw in 5.43 along with Section Six, just in case there's any issue there, but we don't need 5.43 in these circumstances. We can do it. That's why, as you'll get into it, you'll see there's no need for any counterbalancing amenities because under Section Six, they're not required. I appreciate you bringing that up. I should have brought it up myself.
Understood. I just, for some reason, the memo that we received had the side yard setback as a special permit under 5.43 and then the FAR as as a Section Six.
I would always prefer Paul to oversight us than undersight us, I guess.
Certainly. I just wanted to make sure that we understood what the relief was that we were supposed to be considering.
It's the distance between, it's the side yard setback and the setback between that and the house, correct?
Okay. Randolph, you have a question?
Yeah, can I just ask a follow-up about this? This is about the same side yard setback question, Bobby. Is it your view that since the structure as it exists now is in the side yard setbacks, left side and right side, that even though the new construction is also within the setback, that it's the same sides, it's new construction, but other parts of the building are already farther into it? Is that why you view it as not creating a new nonconformity?
That's correct. I always look at it like the simplest way to do it is, you know, we could build this addition and then come back later and build the garage using 5.43. Right? So that's kind of always the way they simplify things. Could I do this addition and then come back and build something using 5.43? Here, I have the nonconforming condition already, so I just use Section Six because it's easier and straightforward and you don't have to deal with counterbalancing amenities and landscaping plans and add additional cost to what's already expensive addition. But yes, thank you for putting that up.
That was my only question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Randolph, I'm sorry. You are Randolph. Wadner, do you have any follow-up questions?
I do not have any follow-up questions. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, anything to add before we go to public comment?
No, thank you.
Polly, do we have anyone who wishes to comment on this proposal?
I do not see anybody's hand raised and nothing in the chat.
Okay, thank you. And I will note that as Mr. Allen presented, we do have letters of support in the record. Polly, could we have the planning board report, please?
Yes, the planning board concurred with the planning staff's opinion that these were, you know, minimal increases in the FAR, which is pre-existing nonconforming, and in the side yard setback. And I would agree that this relief could be granted under Section Six. It wouldn't have to be, you wouldn't have to use Section 5.43. The proposal adequately addresses the restricted nature of the shared driveway and garage. And the planning board therefore recommended approval of the site plan by Dennis O'Brien dated July 11, 2025, and architectural plans by Phil Kramer dated August 1, 2025, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final floor plans and elevations stamped and signed by a registered architect and a final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning or designee for review and approval. And I would strike condition number two if you so choose to grant this under Section Six. And therefore, the second condition would be, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval the floor plans, site plans, and elevations displaying the approval stamp of the director for regulatory planning and evidence that the Board of Appeals decision has been obtained from the town clerk's office by the applicant or their representative and recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Thank you, Polly. Do we have a representative of the building department or are you going to read their comments?
Well, I don't see Mr. Campbell here, so I will tell you that Mr. Campbell will ensure that all of the conditions are met and that all of the building codes are met.
Okay, thank you, Polly. Board deliberation. Wadner, do you want to start, please?
You calling on me?
I am calling.
Basically, I'm in favor the applicant meets 905 condition for approval of special permits.
Okay, thank you. Randolph, anything to add?
Just that, I'm also in support. I'm noting that I believe that this project meets the requirements of Section Six of Chapter 48 that the, I'm reading here, that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. And we've seen that the existing structure is nonconforming in its side setbacks and in its FAR. And, you know, a very modest solution to a very familiar problem, nicely worked out. And as Wadner says, with the 905 conditions being met, I would vote in favor of support.
And I agree with everything that Randolph just said. I would further emphasize that this is relief that can be granted under 48, Section Six, so no counterbalancing amenity is necessary. Therefore, it is a unanimous grant of the requested relief, subject to the conditions with the elimination of condition number two, which calls for a counterbalancing amenity because it is not necessary.
Well, very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Our next matter is 27 White Place. Is the applicant or their representative?
Their representative is here. I believe that is, just a minute. Is it John Chapman? Or this is 56, just a minute.
Hello. Hi.
We are the owners and our architect submitted the documents, but he unfortunately is not here. We are happy to give it a go.
Okay, let's start with, will you waive the reading of the published notice?
I'm sorry. Say that again. Sorry. We really do apologize. We're a little overwhelmed right now, given that we did not think we were coming on camera tonight, so we're sorry about this.
No problem. Let's see. Let's see what we can do.
Okay.
So a notice of this hearing was published in the local paper. Unless you waive that reading, we need to read it in all of its detail. Most applicants agree to waive the reading of the notice. So my question is, will you waive the reading of the published notice?
That sounds fine.
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. Why don't you start by telling us who you are and what it is that you would like to do?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yes. So we purchased this place.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, sorry. My name is Melody Morris.
I'm Jonathan Greiner. We are the owners of the home, 27 White Place.
We purchased this place about a little over a year ago. Before we bought it, it had been used as an Airbnb. And so we have spent some time kind of doing the necessary improvements inside in order to make it livable. Like the kitchen needed some work, the bathrooms, like all of that. The existing square footage is around 1,200 square feet. And our proposal is to add, is to sort of extend the second story over an existing kitchen to create an additional around 300 square feet, so it'll be about 1,500 square feet. What done? Do you want to say anything?
Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry. So we have two sons. The bedrooms are all very, very small. Our sons are getting very, very large. And so our goal is to add a master bedroom, and so we have enough room for our growing children here. And so the, sorry, I'll let you go. Sorry, what information do you need from us? Sorry.
That's okay. So if I am following, you have, you want to add a floor above an existing kitchen?
Yes, our kitchen goes straight off the back of the house with a flat black kind of rubber roof. So we're going to put in a master bedroom, bathroom, closet, and a pitched roof on top of that.
Above the kitchen?
Above the kitchen, exactly.
If I ask you, are you changing the footprint of the building? You're just going up. You're not making what's currently the kitchen any wider or longer?
We are not, but we are like, it will sort of like jut out and there'll be some posts to kind of hold the like
Yeah, there'll be.
cantilever bit up.
Yeah, the cantilever overhang of just a couple of feet and then adding some posts onto our existing patio in order to support that.
Got it. And is the addition going to be the same height as your existing building?
Yes.
Yes.
At the tallest part of your existing building. Okay. And it looks like you have been cited for.
Architect just rolled in, it seems. So if we want to, we're glad to pass it over to him at this point.
I had this at 7:30 on my calendar. I apologize. One second.
Okay.
Okay. Here we go.
We were trying our best, Eddie.
All right, wonderful. Again, my apologies for keeping the board waiting. We are here to request relief at 27 White Place for side yard setback and rear setback.
Andrew, will you give us your name?
Yes. For the record, my name is Andrew Falkenstein. I'm a registered architect with an office at 7 Kent Street in Brookline, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. I'll waive formal reading. We are here for relief on two issues. Side yard and rear yard setback. This is, I'm more than happy to share the plans, but the planning board approved the plans very quickly. What we're asking for is a very, very small special permit. We're not increasing the footprint at all. We're basically putting a second story on an existing rear yard, one-story addition. And we're making this second story addition hierarchically smaller than the rest of the house. And we, if the, I'm more than happy to walk you through the plans, but at this point, I'd also open it up to any abutter comments. We have three letters of directive abutters who are in support of this project. We received no negative abutter comment of any sort during the planning board phase. We're not increasing the intensity. We're allowing a young family to stay in the house, and we're doing so with no effect on the streetscape. We've been through the preservation commission. They accepted our plans. We're not taking anything away from the charm of White Place. We're not blocking light or air or having any nuisance of any kind on the neighborhood. And for that reason, I believe that this proposed use is in keeping with the character and with the bylaws of the town of Brookline and that there will be no negative effects. And I respectfully request that this board grant a special permit for the grounds that we have requested.
Okay. By the way, your clients did a great job without you. I'm not saying that they're going to put you out of business, but they really did do a good job explaining to us what they were looking to do. So thanks to all of you. The question that I have is, it appears that you are looking for special permit relief under Section 5.43 of the bylaw, which allows us to waive a yard setback if a counterbalancing amenity is offered. Can you share with the board what your counterbalancing amenity is?
Yes. One thing we are doing, which we believe improves the streetscape of the house. And remember, we are dealing with approximately 2,000 square foot lot. So our opportunity for improving the streetscape is very limited. But we're adding a canopy over the front door, which, just in the same way as a porch, as a farmer's porch, we believe helps. And we're also building a stoop underneath the canopy. We believe that that is a gesture to the street, to the neighborhood of an outwardly focused house in the same way that a porch, you know, a porch is, but on a very small scale. And we believe this is our counterbalancing amenity.
Okay. I will ask my fellow board members, starting with Randolph. Randolph, do you want to see the plans?
No.
Wadner, do you want to see the plans?
No.
Randolph, do you have any questions for the applicant or their architect?
I only had the same one that you had about counterbalancing amenity. And let me just continue there, actually. Mr. Falkenstein, you said canopy and something else?
Canopy and a stoop, a little landing, a two-step landing.
Well, that's so you can step up and get in the door, right?
Correct.
So how do you get in the door now?
There are two stone steps that are very shallow and there's no covering. So this is, there's no covering at all. We're proposing a canopy, and we're replacing the two stone steps with slightly deeper wood steps.
And maybe just.
Handrails on it or just the steps?
Stone is a
Generous.
generous description. They're made, they're like concrete. They're very.
Crumbling concrete is the best way to describe them now.
Sorry, concrete. Yeah, that's right. They are concrete. There's two older concrete steps. So what we're doing is, this house is about 10 feet from the sidewalk, and what we're doing is making a neighborly gesture and improving the quality of materials and the and the social aspect of the front face of the house, which is which is a counterbalancing amenity. It's going to make White Place, which is, by the way, everyone in White Place knows what's happening here. I was at a completely unrelated event and someone said, hey, Andrew, what are you doing in White Place? That's Veronique. Do you know Veronique and her husband? Yep. So everyone supports this, and on a place like White Place, having a little stoop and a little cover and upgrading the quality of materials, I would argue, is a counterbalancing amenity. It's making the street a little nicer, a little friendlier, easier. If a neighbor comes over and it's raining, they can wait for a minute and not get wet while the owner comes to the door. It is an amenity, and considering how little land we have to work with, it really was one of the only things we could do.
Randolph, any more questions?
No, thank you. No more questions. Thank you.
Wadner, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Polly, do we have anyone in the waiting room who wishes to comment on this proposal?
I do not see anybody raising their hand or in the chat.
Okay, could we get the planning board report, please?
Yes. The planning board, again, concurred with the planning staff comments that the addition is being made to this pre-existing nonconforming structure is very minimal. There have actually been several houses on White Place where people have added a second story on the rear projection. So this is quite common on this street. The proposed alterations should not negatively impact the abutters or the neighborhood. And therefore, the planning board recommended approval of a site plan by Michael Plansey dated February 27, 2025, and architectural plans by Andrew Falkenstein dated May 22, 2025, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final floor plans and elevations stamped and signed by a registered architect and a final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning or designee for review and approval. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit, and I will change this rather than a landscape plan, an improved covered front entrance as the counterbalancing amenity, and that should be executed in accordance with the approved plan. And three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the And three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner. For review and approval, the floor plans, site plans and elevations displaying the approval stamp of the director of regulatory planning. And evidence that the Board of Appeals decision has been obtained from the town clerk's office by the applicant or representative and recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Thank you, Polly. Any comments from the building department on this?
Again, the building department will ensure that these conditions are met and that all building codes are met.
Polly, I have a question before we begin board deliberations, um. Which is with respect to the counterbalancing amenity. Um, you know, as evidenced by the staff's proposed conditions typically we see as a counterbalancing amenity for a. Yard setback special permit, some sort of screening or, um, landscape plan, whether it's a fence, whether it's some. Planting some trees, et cetera. I am wondering if in your extensive experience reviewing counterbalancing amenities. You have seen an instance where the approved or allowed counterbalancing amenity was basically upgrades to the. To the property, um, like.
Well, I can think of one example, which is Carlton Street, which we was, we had not too long ago. Where they were making the, uh, the rear entry, rear exit. Uh, you know, much more usable. And, um, and also that it would be more pleasant for the. House to the rear facing it, and that was used as a counterbalancing amenity.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um, okay. Board deliberations, um, Randolph.
Let's see, um. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna, this relates to a number of my comments. I'm, I'm very familiar with White Place. I've lived nearby for. About thirty-five years, um, and I, I was just there the other day, uh. Uh, with one of my architect friends in tow, walking him down the street a little out of our way, but it was. It was for a reason because it's a, it's a special street. It's interesting. It's very. Liveable and has its special scale. And I think some of that relates to why I'm supportive of this, uh, request for relief. Uh, I'm also familiar with the grade change to the north. I, I, I've been in the house on Davis Ave that is right behind, like their kitchen is in the back, looks right down. Um, but I, it's quite a bit higher. And, you know, for, for the basics of the case, I think, um, that the special. Permit granting conditions, um, under section nine oh five ha- have, have been met. You know, it's, 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 it, it's yet another modest proposal, um, and, um, and appropriately done. But let me talk about the counterbalancing amenity. I, I think this. When we, we, we often have, um. Uh. The offerings of, of, you know, improved landscaping, plantings, things like that. And we, we seem to prefer to have them on the street because they, they more clearly benefit the public. There's nothing I can see in the bylaw. About landscaping. There's some language about dimensional substitutions and so on. So if, if our, if our practice, if not exactly a principle, is that we're looking for some benefit to the public. I actually think that the architectural environment of White Street, of White Place is, um. Is, um, worth paying attention to and, and, and making, making, you know, thoughtful additions to. Um, I'd looked at the drawings back and forth a couple of times. It was, is this house? Um, you know, is it, is it, is it appropriate to add a small, uh, you know, gable? Um, canopy over this front door? I, I think it is. I think it's, I think it's a good fit with the other porches and. You know, there's some gable ones and some shed ones, um, that overhang the street. And I think, um. I'm, I, I, I see a benefit to the public and that kind of archi- architectural articulation. It's, it's probably also going to last longer than shrubs. Uh, which I do sometimes worry about in some other cases. Um, so for all those reasons, um, uh, I, I, uh, I think it's a worthy project. I would support the, the, uh, request for relief.
Thank you, Randolph. Wadner?
Um, thank you. I, I do agree with Randolph. It is a, a modest, uh, addition. Um, it is appropriate. Um, the building footprint is not increasing the building footprint. It's just going on the top. The, the structure that's already exists. And I do see that, um, adding a tree. It's, you know, to me, it's considered as a counterbalance balancing amenity because. It's all, it's gonna contribute toward the town goal of reducing, uh, going more green and also it will help. Um, you know, not only. Uh, the, the street, uh, as well as the neighbors. So it will provide shade. Uh, around the house and, uh, keep it cooler in the summertime. So all those things is I, I, I believe it is a counter balancing amenity, uh, and I'm in favor of it.
Right, so just to.
Meet the condition of nine oh five. I'm in favor.
Thank you, Wadner. Just to clarify, I don't think that any trees are being proposed, is.
Uh, I think there's a.
I thought it was a shade canopy and, and a, and new stairs.
The can, is it a say canopy tree? That's what I heard.
No, 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 new trees are being proposed.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But, but I, I will tell you that the, that there's no asphalt. On the, on their entire driveway, that they've got pavers everywhere, permeable pavers. Um, and, um, they have a plant bed at the back of their patio, which is going to be extensively planted. Um, and, um, the, the lot is pretty well. Um, landscaped and they do landscape in the front. So, um, a- again, I think this is, this, this is just the, the icing on the cake. And, um, I appreciate, uh, Ms. Schneider, this inquiry. I, I personally feel that counterbalancing amenities should. Be proportionate in scale to the relief sought, sought. When a developer asks for triple the FAR. They should provide a lot when this is an extension of an existing non-conforming use. That has no real impact on the neighborhood. I feel that smaller, um, counterbalancing amenities are appropriate.
Thank you.
Um, I, I apologize for mischaracterized. I, I thought I heard a tree, but, um, that's fine. I'm, I'm in.
Butter, does that change your analysis at all?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, all right, great. Um, I am also in favor of granting the requested relief. Um, I do believe that the project meets the standards of. Nine point oh five. It's an addition to an existing residential structure, so it is certainly an appropriate location for the use. I don't think that it is. Posing any sort of hazard to vehicles or pedestrians and that there is no change to site circulation or anything like that. I don't think it has any impact on. The supply of affordable housing in the town, um, and I don't think it's going to have a detrimental impact on. A butters, um, in any way, um. While I did ask questions about the counterbalancing amenities because as discussed, it is typically our practice that when someone is seeking. Side yard relief, you know, they're looking. Typically, what we're looking for is some sort of buffering from neighbor, neighboring properties, right, to counterbalance. You know, the fact that something is going closer to the property line than was there before. Um, I think that this is a unique situation and as Polly points out. We have had architectural additions or features or upgrades count as counterbalancing amenities. Um, in other cases, I think that based on what Randolph is describing. I think upgrading materials and improving the streetscape on White Place, which is a. Fairly quirky and unique, um, environment and context in any, in any event. Um, I think it does count as a counterbalancing amenity. So with that, this is a unanimous grant of the requested relief, um. Subject to the modification of condition two that Polly noted as she was reading them into the record.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for patience and compassion, Joanna. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You guys did great. Thanks. All right, our last, uh, case tonight is.
Fifty-six, fifty-six Spooner Road.
Fifty-six Spooner Road is the applicant or it's represented.
The architect John Chapman is here. I did see that he was present. Yes.
Good evening. Hi, my name's John Chapman. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Mr. Chapman, will you waive the reading of the notice?
Yes, I will. My name's John Chapman and I'm an architect, uh, practicing at an office at, uh, forty-five Hampshire. Street in, uh, Wellesley, Mass. I'm representing Jess and Jesslyn Tushen, who unfortunately can't. Join us tonight. They're at a school function for their two children. And so, uh, they've asked me to present to you. The proposal to expand their, uh, existing home. Uh, the kids are growing and their friends are growing and they. Simply need more space like many of the applicants you hear. Um. This property is in a S- S- ten zone and, uh, the Chestnut Hill local historic district. We've met and been approved with that commission and we've. Previously met with the, uh, planning board and received their approval with no objections from neighbors. And, uh, no contingencies. Uh, what we're proposing to do is add, uh. Two different, uh, additions to the existing home. The central part of the house is a two-story stucco, a two-and-a-half-story stucco. Uh, structure. And on the left side is an existing two-story porch. The first floor of that porch is a screen porch, which does contribute to FAR. And the second story is an open porch, which does, it's an open sleeping porch, which does not contribute to the FAR. Um, and we're proposing to replace that. With a slightly smaller footprint of a two-story addition. On the first floor is a library. With a setback further from the street and a setback further from the rear lot. And a, a li- a, a bathroom closet on the second story. On the right-hand side, we're proposing to extend the existing kitchen. And on an L behind that in the rear of the yard, we're, uh, extending a one-story addition. For the breakfast room and adjacent to that in the center of the rear is a one-story mudroom. Uh, although the, uh, zoning meets all setbacks, there's no relief required on any of the side, front or rear setbacks. But we do need relief from FAR. The existing FAR is thirty, about thirty-two hundred square feet and the proposed is an additional eight hundred and fifty square feet. Of that, uh, and. Total, we have, we have about four thousand ninety square feet. Uh, allowable only thirty-six seventy square feet. So we're looking for relief for about four hundred and sixteen square feet of FAR. Interestingly. Three hundred thirty square feet of that is actually in the existing basement. Because we're converting some of that space in the basement to habitable space. It now will contribute to FAR where, whereas it had not previously been FAR. Additionally, the, uh, one of the mitigating, potentially partially mitigating circumstances is. That second-story sleeping porch on the left side is not contributing to FAR, but it is, uh. A mass. It, 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 uh, it has a, uh, roof and it has, uh, you know, structure to it. But by replacing it, we are, uh, it, it will contribute to FAR. So that's a interesting anomaly. Um. That's the scope of what we're doing and, um. I would open it up to your comments.
Thank you. Uh, Randolph, any questions for Mr. Chapman? Any desire to see the plans?
Uh, no, and no, I don't have any questions and I thought the drawings in the packet were very clear and informative.
Wadner, same questions to you. Questions, plans?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Um, Polly, is there anyone who wants to comment on this?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, could we have the planning board report then, please?
Yes, um, the planning board, um. You know, was, was very pleased with these additions. Uh, before they, they, uh, recommended approval, they knew that the preservation commission. Had, uh, approved the proposal as being consistent with the architectural characters of the Chestnut Hill local historic. District. Um, they felt that the additions were effectively designed and that they would not, uh, have any kind of negative impact. On the butters or neighborhood. Uh, the zoning by law does allow, um, FAR to be increased up to a hundred and twenty percent. Uh, by special permit. And this addition falls within that a hundred and twenty percent. Therefore, the planning board recommended approval of the site plan by Field Resources dated July fourteen, twenty twenty-five. And the architectural plans by John Chapman. Dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final floor plans and elevations. Stamped and signed by a registered architect and a final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor. To the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. And two. Um, prior to the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval, the floor plans, site plans, elevations. Uh, with the approval stamp of the assistant direct, the director for regulatory planning. And evidence that the Board of Appeals decision has been obtained from the town clerk's office by the applicant or their representative. And recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Great, thanks, Polly. Anything from the building department on this?
Uh, no, just that the building department again reiterated that they will make sure that all the conditions are met. And that all the billing codes are met.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, Mr. Chapman, any closing remarks?
No, I'll, I'll hear from your board. Thanks.
I do. Thank you. Um, Randolph, can I ask you to kick off deliberations, please?
Sure. Um. Uh, very clear presentation of the project. Uh, it's a straightforward request for relief just for FAR. Um, and we look at the, as Polly just mentioned, the section. Five point twenty-two, point three, point B, point one, point B, um. Uh, provides for, um. An increase of up to twenty percent of the permitted floor area, um. Provided the conditions for approval of the special permit are met, um. Those are the ones under nine oh five, one, A through E. And, you know, the one about adversely affect the neighborhood, I, one of the reasons that I. I don't really have difficulty in, in, um. In voting for this is that, yeah, they've, um, Mr. Chapman has taken the additional twenty percent. But it's actually broken up into three additions to the building, which has about, you know, right, left and rear, has balancing effect.
Yes.
Um, you know, this is, uh, we don't need to talk about architecture here as, as part of the relief, but I will note that that's. That's, um, that's one of the ways that it, 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 um. I would say gracefully modifies the building in a way that I would expect to be acceptable to the neighborhood. Um, and, you know, completely separately, it, it really does solve some circulation problems in the house. So well, well done with that, but, um. But back, back to zoning, I think it, 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 it has met the requirements, uh, for a grant of a special permit and I would defer it.
Great. Thank you, Randolph. Wadner?
Um, I agree with Randolph and I have nothing more to add.
I also agree that the criteria under nine point oh five are met by this proposal. Um, therefore, it is a unanimous grant of the request to relieve subject to the conditions as read into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Polly, I think we have no other business this evening.
Correct.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you.
A lot of growing families in Brookline.
Yeah. Hey, Polly, quick question. Where you go? Do you, is there a schedule coming out of more forty-eight dates pretty soon?
There are. Uh, Cameron and I are meeting tomorrow and Monday and we will be, uh. You know, assigning everybody for the next, uh, six to eight months.
Excellent, very talented. Excellent, very timely.
Great, thank you.
Look for that. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Cameron.
All right.
Thank you. All right.